The changes that they want.
The things that have to happen here.
But nothing major.
No.
Was it not maybe the nineteen or twenty?
Nineteen.
It's the Tuesday.
Okay.
Do you have your ducks on a roll down there?
That's right.
They didn't run a break.
I only put my ducks on a break.
You ready? All right. What's the first step to the water system upgrades?
Funding.
Funding.
Funding. All right. Before you can get to funding, though. Plan. Do you have, do you have the plan?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Plan.
And we.
Do you have the, uh...
Our grant was already turned, not grant, the application was already turned in, so...
We've got our grants.
And, and you also have to do some rate increases?
Yep.
Water rates.
At some point.
That would come when, when the projects actually, yeah, moving forward.
We're not going to raise the rates unless the funding happens.
Then we have to.
Okay.
I've been working with RCAC to...
Okay.
We're going to start developing a rate structure.
A rate structure.
That has to be met by the time the project's finished, so, yeah.
Really great. That would all go well.
So, the funding, you, you have applied, I know you, you were looking at a combination of USDA and state funds, and you also are...
Water and Health Authority.
Oregon Health Authority.
Yeah, so we've got like, three different pockets possibly.
Okay. And so, this is moving forward? Okay, so what, what is your anticipated, uh, you know, timeline?
It's all based on the funding.
If we don't get the grants, funding all will be delayed another year.
So, the funding cycle is already started? Do you need, are the more grant applications that haven't been submitted?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
They have them.
So, a lot of, these two things depend on the funding? Okay. And I know that you've been working with Larry Holzke and the, and that whole team of folks, and so that, that really, that process is fairly streamlined.
Much better.
The application not show up at the seminar?
All right. Let's go to, um, improve park connectivity for youth.
Just for dorm.
Just for dorm.
Just for me and my kids.
You guys need a park.
So, I know at one time, there was a, a, a recreation, uh, plan done, is that included?
The county's got one, but I don't, it did just three, four years from now.
Does that, does that include...
It included, it included the town and the district.
It did?
Well, not like a lot of the town, but it was just, uh, it was more of an inventory of what we're going to have.
So, what is the first step then to, to getting to...
And that was just to, we had to get that plan so that we could then apply for grants.
Yes.
So, and which we've been successful in some, some things already.
So, does the, does the town own the parks?
Yes.
Are you the, okay. So, again, is, are you at the stage of funding, or do you need more specific, uh, plans in place before you...
We need a plan, funding. I know there's a lot of ideas in the town out there to create a plan to see, and we need to kind of concentrate that along with access funding.
It'd be nice to talk to some of our partners in the community, especially the hospital district, where they, their plans on are, possibly to...
Three, three years they want to build.
Three, three years, yeah. Maybe they'll do some...
Or what? That the hospital wants to build a pool.
They want to build their own pool.
Indoors?
Yeah, indoors.
I don't know if I would fit the point, but just for us, to get the school and the hospital, and that's what we're going to do.
That's, oh, yeah.
That, that was one of the things that...
I'd love to see my pool, I'm going to go through, usually do around.
I have a parking lot district, and that's one of the reasons why we keep it around.
Is that something that is, would be a first step as to...
It was talked about, there in that plan, but it didn't really go anywhere. We have a ton of different organizations, but none of them, one umbrella can understand this.
A long, long time ago, we found the town council, there was a study done about building a indoor pool. It never really went anywhere because of the cost of maintenance, even after we got funding for building, you know, keeping the pool open year-round, the flood barrels, and all the expenses. So, I mean, it's, it's a huge project, but it has to be done with other people.
Is there a short-term win? Is there something you could do in the short-term with, you know, a specific park or specific...
I, I think the splash, the which part?
So, so that's where I think it comes down to our goals.
Yeah.
And financially, we're, what we want to do is some potential minds, or future minds coming in, like, when we talk about Red Rock, and I want to say a hundred and sixty-five thousand, is what the service development fee would be the first year, and there's three percent every year up to that, so it's, I mean, that's a lot of money not to just throw around in the general fund, but to think about, you know...
Specific.
Yeah, specific projects that we want to invest in, and when it comes down to like our lodgers tax, getting good recommendations back from the committee to say, okay, that's part of tourism, you know, our parks are definitely part of tourism, and we want to put some money there potentially. So, things we just have to decide financially, whether we want the money that's coming in.
But, do you have kind of like, the, okay, okay, if I, if, if I get a call tomorrow from the, uh, and this happened to be the Ford foundation, the one in, in New York City, if I gave you five hundred thousand dollars, what would you do with it?
Oh, that'd be easy. Fly, put a cover, cool.
All right. So, I, I think you're, I don't think you have specific kind of a, even if it's not a plan, because I know that's not really what you mean more, more about.
Strategies.
A, a strategy or a, an inventory of projects, maybe even, of things where you would start, what would, what, what would be first, what would be second, you know, kind of because as resources become available, that kind of gets to that little bit of, of, you know, just moving forward without getting lost in, we don't have a red district, and we don't have this. So, where, where would you start? If, if you had to do this tomorrow, what, would you put a committee together? Would you hire someone to develop a strategy for you? Would you...
I would say committee. Committee is one of the areas, basically.
And I think you probably want to look at for grants, which you...
Okay.
I, you know, is to help with all of the funding is part of these things.
So, a steering committee? I know another meeting.
Right.
Yep. A funding, a funding, uh, opportunity? And a project list? Okay, so how, how would you as a town council prioritize projects at that point?
I would ask the public input, you know, generally the public have a pretty good idea of what the number one need is for your community.
Okay. So, would you start with existing? I heard you say that you've got, you might put a basketball court in there or so.
I would, personally, I would do kind of using existing spaces and making them more usable. I know it's a lot that isn't, or minimal.
Is, is your pool used in the suburbs now? Is it, it's upgraded, you ready?
I have to turn the address from this side.
Yeah.
Roll a plan for that heater that's from the old one, is it?
We're on a red now.
Better be.
Kind of on the snow. It has to get a better pool cover, like a thicker pool.
Yes, the industrial.
Yeah, those two things are possible.
So, so you would kind of start with your existing and then look at opportunities to kind of add on to, and, and the splash park, is that something that would be incorporated with the pool?
It would be a...
It's at a, it's at a location where there's a playground.
There's a waiting pool that needs to be...
Up.
Down. That would be where it goes.
Do you need more parks? More space, or more open space, or connectivity?
Maybe more attractions. I mean, we have, you know, the pool up here, that open hill area, and the tennis courts, tennis courts are being used, and open hill area does to some extent, but, you know, sure with playgrounds, they're more likely to attract people if you use more.
It'd be nice to have, uh, you know, talk on the north end, take on the west, somewhere in, what else, like down beyond the south side of the United States, but there's so much info that's happening, there isn't really a lot of big thoughts either, so...
Well, it, it is one of the things that can be looked at in the brownfield process, so as we're looking at identifying potential opportunities in old industrial areas, that may be, you know, something along those lines, and potential funding opportunities, and that's one of the things. So... So, actually, this, this funding opportunity, you know, you can, there are, I've actually started identifying a lot of that because I've been doing a lot of projects and stuff, and also the, uh, there's a lot of projects going on in other smaller communities similar to this, so I could share some of that information with you, that, that in the future to, to see. All right. One more. I am going to go to community revitalization and housing.
All right, too. Not sure what to do with the hivers, but that...
All right. Do you know what other communities have done along those lines for housing, the housing side of this? Have you looked at any of that? So... Okay. They did theirs through an urban renewal district, which is a process in the south. Uh, there are community development block grant housing rehab that, that you don't really, you wouldn't qualify for, however, if you're just working on low-income housing, you wouldn't qualify for that, so, uh, so, really where you need to start, I guess, is identifying resources? And, and incentives, right? Is this something that you, as a town, have funds to put into, or is this something you would need grants and other funding to be able to go?
Grants and others.
Okay.
Do you always need money?
I know, it's a silly question, but sometimes, you know, sometimes it's enough of a priority that, you know, as a matter of fact, I, I go a little bit back to Clement Lake, because I, I know that they're on a regular basis, they have set up, and it's a program, and they are actually, have gone through the process to be, go into receiverships on properties that are not fixed up in a certain timeline. They are sending letters out to homeowners and insisting that they maintain their properties. They have put in, in place ordinances which say you cannot board up, you cannot put boards literally across state-owned properties because it becomes an attractive nuisance and a blight, blight. So, they are aggressively addressing the, that issue of properties that need to be improved by nudging, I guess, a very strong nudge, of the property owners themselves in, in the... So, there are examples of, there are ordinances that would have to be passed to go through that process, but is that, that is potential, a potential incentive that could be put in place? And again, the, uh... One of the other things that they, they have done through the data, the, uh, has anyone, have you worked, have you probably been with what Urban Renewal District is? Have you looked at what that, would you, is that something you'd like more information on?
I, I've heard the term a lot, and I, you know, wouldn't be able to explain it.
I can tell you Fire District don't generally like them, because it basically increases the, uh, the tax basis, and so all, all improvements are done through a tax assessment onto potential value of the property, so it is a little bit of a public relations effort that has to be gone through, put on the place, but, but we, I can, we can put together a presentation of the local districts. What else? Where do you start?
Yeah.
Where do you start?
I think it's working with our partners too, because there's, you know, I'm thinking, um, like the community partnership that's doing a bunch of projects, make sure that we can help where we can help.
LCP honors.
So, the Clement Lake Regional Housing Center is also, uh, an organization that covers Clement Lake, that we are actually looking at applying for some housing rehab funding that would be to categorize, so...
We only had somebody who was community with on that. Oh, wait.
That would be you?
Yeah.
I have an owner that would give you money to go and tell him, "How's it, he's actually got some ideas, and he's going to give you money to do it."
So, having a pool of funds available for homeowners to use, would that, is that what you were saying?
No, he's an investor.
Okay.
He owns, put up, he's a contractor account, he's looking at two other processes that he would like to turn into either low income or work with the one that's, for the company that I'm on.
Okay, so he's willing to, to look at programs that are available for low-income housing and things like that. So, those are, again, uh, that, those programs are out there? It's just...
He's a young guy, he's pretty aggressive, so he's, you know, he would be willing to get in and start this like that.
So, you need to find like avenues to entice investors and to do the low income, or just to, to...
He, he's got a property in town, it's about ten minutes that he's considered buying for that.
Okay.
But he just sees, to see what the resources are and what he uses.
Does he understand opportunities of these?
No.
Do you?
No. That's why I say he doesn't.
Uh, okay, that's a whole half hour in itself, so I'm not going to go...
We, we can talk about that.
But that is another, I think, along with urban, urban renewal districts, opportunities elements is another potential investor incentive, so, we can bring that into that. So, part of this is information, uh, gathering the information, identifying resources, and then potentially partnering with others to put programs in place. Okay? Last one. Where do you start on workforce issues?
Bring in a pitch map, Ken.
Well, I'm going to get really honest, it's one of the, working with our businesses to improve and... Employees with benefits, you know, that they can factor in. Somebody... If somebody's moving here because they're employer, they, they found an employer, well, they can't find housing, they can't find childcare, they can't find, you know, this and that, makes it really hard for them to come here.
I do know that the business I was talking about that's expanding, they bought an existing business here, and one of the first things they did is raised the wages to a hundred percent. They now have employees that want to work with them and stay there.
Well, the irony is, you know, we have businesses that pay out of common place to come or come in and work in a much higher rate than a local, and essentially, they're local stock.
I'd highly rate it.
So, this is not directly a, a town effort, but it is, uh, you know, a PR and also kind of a, so is there something that the town itself can do to, uh... I'm coming up blank, so you're going to have to help me here. I know it's an important issue.
It's an important issue. How to solve it.
Yeah, it's a big issue with not a simple answer.
Right.
I know my father-in-law's business, he's going to retire in two years, and he'll, you know, closing doors because he has moved the kids over, and three guys that he's got working now, and he can't turn it over in the history guys, two of them can't even drive company vehicles, he's driving on driveway classes.
This is something that is succession planning, not, not just also, not just for for-profit businesses, but non-profits also, that's a puppy deal, and so it, it is an issue that needs to be addressed as a community, there are resources out there and things like that. How many people here know about the Small Business Development Center? So, that's another resource that's out there, it's other, based on Clement Community College, and they do cover Clement Lake areas, but the Small Business Development Center really does work with the employers themselves on helping them identify ways that they can improve their personnel issues.
What are they doing now in Lake County?
Barry, who is one of the counselors, is here once a month at least, and is meeting, uh, in Clement with, with several of your businesses. Their issue again is one like, we all have, it's having enough staff, they don't have a staff person here, but I think that that is, understanding what resources they have, so you can at least refer.
I'd love to talk to the businesses and find out what their ideas are or what their challenges are for...
When he's over here, if he can come to the council meeting and just give us a rundown on, on what his, what he is doing.
To me, that's one of the important things that, that you can do.
I never, I never had heard of that particular, have you?
I have.
You probably have, but I have, but we do need to get them here.
Yeah, and really take advantage of what is, even though there, it's not as robust as we would like it to be, we, there are, you know, it is one of the services that is out there, and, and along with KCC, I do know that Chip Massey comes over well. Has he been with the town?
Not since I've been here.
And he's here today?
I know, with the county, yeah.
I, I think some of those resources are out there, but I don't think that they let us know about some of them, I mean, some we find out about, but, you know, they're not reaching out to us, so I think that's important, that we can find more resources that are available and understand what we need for us.
By way, you know, when your business comes to the management and says, hey, we're going to do a nest, she knows where she can start it.
Exactly. Quite often, towns or cities will put up business resource guides on their websites, and so that is something that you could, could potentially, you know, identify resources there out there, but understanding how to, understanding that they're is one of the first things, and inviting them to come and make presentations to you as well. What about, that, KCC also is the umbrella for what used to be COIC, if you know that, so they also now provide the workforce training, and so, again, that, Chip Massey got bumped up as interim, but he, he really is the workforce person, so I think inviting Chip to come and talk to you about the programs there also. All right. Anything else? I know, everyone's got that blurry dog, it's two hours in charge, an hour and forty-five minutes.
Like, you have something?
I, I think it's all great what's been put down here, but I think there's one thing that I would remind the town of Lakeview, is asset enhancement needs to be looked at quite crucially, and you have a very important asset in our community that can heat homes and businesses, our geothermal energy has been a proven product in providing to the hospital and to the schools, and there are other resources, the town does not have ample geothermal energy, but it is readily available. So, you know, when you talk of the improvement of housing, I, I don't know what John Day did, but if you could offer heating alternatives to our community, I think that you would be a winner, and I just, assets enhancement is the one thing, and I'm sorry about it. It's something that the town does have already.
Okay?
I would just say that most communities do provide heating alternatives, might be a strategy, just very few, and with the natural gas being at the city limits, you might even look at a municipally-owned service for providing natural gas in our community, if no one else would want to step in, so, it's certainly something that's done by other communities, and is allowed in Oregon.
I haven't gotten given up on getting natural gas.
Well, that's, geothermal's cheaper than natural gas, it's a second alternative.
And my, and my, uh, part of that is understanding that cornerstone minerals can also expand if they have natural gas.
That's true.
Yeah, they have. Okay, well, I realized I stapled these together wrong, so your page one is in the back, but I, this is... Sorry. This is kind of the format, and we haven't got to a specific action plan yet, but what I will do with this is take it back and give it back to you in a format that kind of feeds back a mission, your mission statement along with your vision, and the different, uh, steps that we've been through already, and then when we get to, uh, get to a point where we actually can then, you can identify, what are your, what are your next steps, but also, how are you going to measure success? Because I think that needs to be an important component in any plan, is, okay, are we just spinning our wheels, or are we making progress? And being able to go back in a year and look at what, what have you accomplished, and, um, you know, are you getting, are you getting something?
A lot of those goals, we need to really set our priorities.
Yes, exactly.
And, and then, you know, work down the list.
It worked down, yes.
Because that's not going to happen in a year or two.
No, it's not.
It's going to be a long-term thing.
So, that, that's why there will, will need to be at least another hour session, I would suggest that if you're willing to have me back again, I'll, I think we can work through that. Okay. I also have all of those statistics stuff, I, does anybody, what, what data?
I would like to see that. I would like to see that.
Yeah, I would like to have that here.
I wish, I had a file.
You want to use the dark box?
Well, it's not everybody knows.
He's got it in German. He must forgot.
You would think, can I get one for Robert that I need?
Thank you very much, you got that for us.
Yeah. All right.
I'm going to fill my paper about...
You can do some homework, Dave. Put out of that.
Yeah. There's been a lot of time store, my office walls have been covered with this.
Well, I haven't either, and I today, I was looking through thinking, okay, I need to talk to my top firm next meeting. I have the seventeen, eighteen light papers, the twelve, the fourteen, but I don't need any.
Okay, do we have, anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at four forty-two.